I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, August 8th, 2016, and the time is 7:00 PM. C, Dr. Hill- oh, I'm sorry, should I start over? Okay, sorry. Microphone is down and we have now called the meeting to order. I apologize. Dr. Hillman, there are a number of items in the table file.
Yes, we have some items in the table file that include appointments, increase, decrease, and changes in assignment, a leave of absence request, and some resignation.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets minutes from the regular school board meeting held on Monday, July 11th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Fritz. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, July 11th, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman.
I have two announcements this evening. First, fifty, fifty, five zero, incoming seventh grade students had a successful trip to Eagle Bluff, July 18th through the 20th. And while at Eagle Bluff, the Northfield students won two awards, the Eagle Bluff Environmental Learning Center Eagle Eye Award for Excellence in Conserving Our Natural Resources, and the Golden Clean Plate Award for Minimizing Food Waste to No Less Than One Pound While In Residence at Eagle Bluff. Community Services wants to thank the following district staff and parent chaperones for assisting with the trip. Northfield School District staff included Tony Seidel, Paula Bargary, and Chris O'Neil. And parent chaperones included Melissa, excuse me, Michelle Kamen, Molly Halls, and Martin Larson. So, as having a seventh grader in my house who went on this trip, it was a very good trip, and they were particularly proud of the less than one pound of food waste, which I thought was really good. Also, we have an update on those who have filed for the school board election as of Thursday, August 4th, and we've had no new ones since, but we've had Noel Stratmon, Fritz Bogot, Rob Hardy, and Ellen Iverson have all filed for school board. And as of the end of today, we have not had any additional filings at this point. So, those are your announcements and recognitions for this evening.
Thank you. Are, is there anything anyone would like to add?
I just wanted to add my comments about the Summer Plus Tour that we were able to take last week. And so I was escorted around with, by Darryl Keller, who is in charge of the program, the director of the program, and this summer is being held at Bridgewater. Anyway, it was really, really great to see the excitement and the energy and everything going on in the Bridgewater building. Enrollment, again, is once again very high. One thing that they, I believe Aaron, last year was the first year for Reading Rockets, so this is the second year. Last year, they had two cabins, they grew to six cabins. It's pretty exciting. Kids have a lot of benchmarks to reach in order to get prizes, and there's a parent component piece, which is really excellent, and they've had great participation by students and parents coming forward, and so it's just been great. And one addition this year that's been particularly good is more of the licensed teachers are staying in the afternoon for enrichment and sponsoring some enrichment book clubs and different things. So just having a licensed teacher there throughout the entire day has really enhanced the program quite a bit. So that's been an excellent addition to this year. Middle school numbers are as strong as they were last year. The, it's interesting, the middle school is great retention, so once you get those kids there, they want to come back every year. Little bit of struggle, of course, to get them there, but once they're there, they're super happy about what they're doing and they want to come back. Just another example of always trying to work to make things better. Darryl had worked with Marnie, and they were able to work it out so eighth graders are able to get a half a credit for being there this summer towards their high schools. And he said they have been there every single day. Not one eighth grader has missed. I mean, it's just, it's so interesting how you find, you know, what that, you know, what that, that secret aspect is, or what's going to really drive them and help them really want to be engaged. And so for them, that was this half credit towards high school. So it was just really fun to be there, and Darryl and his staff are amazing, and it's just a wonderful program. And unfortunately, they have a break, so the kiddos, I think, are pretty sad when Summer Plus ends, but obvious reasons, you have to move on and get ready for the school year, so it was a really great tour. So, with that, I think we can move on to items for discussion and report. Tonight, we will have a report on Educational Assistance Training Modules. Director of Special Services Cheryl Halls here, and Assistant Director of Special Ed, Lynn Kriminga. So, welcome.
Thank you. We appreciate your time and be able to share our paraprofessional training.
Kim, can you unmute the picture?
Okay. Thank you. We were able to share this training at the Minnesota State Conference for the Administrators of Special Education in May, and this is a little piece of what we shared with our state administrators across the, across Minnesota. We called this "Pares on Fire," and it's really our educational assistance training that we piloted two years ago. Deb Peters, our autism, retired, now retired autism consultant at that time, brought forward the idea to develop a way to systematically train our educational assistants in the autism programs, and which then expanded beyond that over the last year. So, why did we do this? We did this because we were seeing an increase in the requests for paraprofessionals every year and throughout the year. We saw also that there was a new requirement in state statute that all educational assistants or paraprofessionals, as it is in the state statute, are required to have specific disability area training. And also, our paraprofessionals have always requested more training, and our teachers have also requested more training for our paraprofessionals. Oh, that's me, sorry. Year one, like I said, we started this as a pilot in year one, two years ago, in our PLCs, Wednesday mornings from 7:30 to 8:30. We really were targeting students from our early childhood programs all the way through upper elementary at that time, and we really were looking at that, that group of students and staff working with autism spectrum disorders. The modules for training are, is called EAMS, which is the Autism Internet Modules. So AIM is, is the modules that were created, and they are free. So it was free access to us, we just had to provide the guidance and the training, which our autism consultant Deb Peters did at the time.
So, the teachers did this with the pares or the EAs, and they, during PLC time, and they created a SMART goal, and their goal was to increase students' independent tasks and completing those tasks. And we wanted to ensure our students that were participating in the general education classes were doing so as independently as possible. So this was their SMART goal that they developed. And to begin the project, they used the Paraprofessional Needs Matrix to identify where students were currently. And so, this is how our teachers request additional paraprofessional support also, but it was a way for them to systematically assess where our students were, where they were participating, and what level they were participating.
Some of the key instructional practices that we were focusing on with our paraprofessionals was working on the modules of language and communication, prompting, visual supports, and then also they could choose a module of their, of their choice during the, during the year. So they would work on these modules during the day. They were provided some time by their teachers, and were given, in about fifteen-minute increments as they could throughout the day, to provide time to get online and to go through the modules. Oh, that's, that's the part. We also tracked the student progress and tracked which modules that the educational assistants were working on. Also, their teachers in the neurobiological programs or ASD programs worked with them. They also went through the modules, so they were familiar with material. Then they act as, they act as the coaches, helping them to implement what they learned in the classroom. And also, then our autism behavior consultant Deb Peters worked as the consultant and met with the teams for thirty to forty minutes after they completed the entire module. So they would read through the module or listen to the modules, then after they completed the entire module, they'd go through it together and talk about what they learned, what they found helpful, how to implement those strategies within the classroom or within their programs, specifically.
So, the light yellow is when our educational assistants first started tracking the amount of time that they were having verbal or physical prompts for students within the general ed setting and the special ed setting. And so, those are in hours. So, the first bar is just over three hours of prompting throughout the day. So, what Deb did with them was she had them put on masking tape on their leg, and every, so for a week, every time they had a verbal prompt with a student, they had to make a check mark. Every time they had a, then the next week, they did physical prompt. They did a check mark for that. And so, then at the end of the school year, they redid that. And so, the orange shows the decrease in the amount of time our paraprofessionals were having to prompt our students. And I think part of it was also showing our paraprofessionals how much time they were actually intervening, and did they actually need to? Were we not waiting enough and giving our students opportunities? And that's where the modules came in, were to increase their independence. And so, some of the impact that it made is that we were to, in two programs, we reduced one FTE, Educational Assistant, time, and still were able to support our students. And then, we even added some new students to the programs and did not need to increase our EA time. So, I think it benefited our students, and it benefited us as a, as a program, so.
So, into year two, so the last year was our year two, and we wanted to expand because we found, and the paraprofessionals themselves or educational assistants themselves reported such great satisfaction with the modules, that we thought we would like to expand this to include any other educational assistant group in the district, as well as any other classroom or teacher, case manager that wanted to go through this. So we offered it, and some, our DCD Mild Moderate Program at Greenville Park participated, our Setting Two Three EBD Program participated, and an LD OHD group from, do you remember which school?
They were from Greenville Park.
Greenville Park also participated. And again, we had the same kind of process in place, and also, the educational assistants from the prior year and the teachers continued to do the modules because there's so many of them, and there's new ones being developed all the time on the website that they can access these at any time. And so that's continuing, it's like a continuing staff development opportunity throughout the year. So we had that increased in year two. And we found great success with that group as well. We do see that those educational assistants that have their class or their case manager or classroom teacher involved see a greater benefit from it. However, it benefits all educational assistants that have been participating. So, in year three, where we want to propose to continue to do this, and we'd like to provide an offer that all educational assistants during that PLC time would have that opportunity to participate during that time. If, we know that some of our paraprofessionals or educational assistants do have a job as supervisory during PLC, but we think through a rotation system, some kind of rotation system, that even if they did have supervision, that we could have them have access to it in some fashion. And then, some of the things too is supporting staff in problem-solving ways to find that time. It is difficult to find time during the day to have the teachers and the EAs work together and/or to look at the, go through the modules throughout the day as well. So, allowing PLC time would help us to kind of combat that, that barrier. So, one of the challenges is that implementing training district-wide, having the consultant meet with the teams is difficult, and we have, we've had a turnover too. We have Deb Peters retired, and we do have a new behavior consultant who is a board-certified behavior analyst, who will be kind of jumping on board, helping us to develop a more systematic way to do this across the district with as many educational assistants. We also like to see that all educational assistants do a required set of modules as they get started, because we think that will really benefit all students and all staff, and the job satisfaction would go up as well. So scheduling that time to get on the computer during the day and meet with their teacher is one of the biggest challenges.
These are, we just wanted to include the actual links, but these are three different modules that have been put out. All three of them are free. And so, the top one is the one that we have begun implementing within the district, but the other two, we have access to. And I know that there's been a couple teachers who have explored those, so I think not just sticking with one module set, but we can expand to that.
The last one is actually the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, and years ago, we started using that site actually as a training site for our educational assistants. They had the opportunity to earn a stipend if they can, if they completed enough of the modules on there. It was a set amount of modules, and I forget what it was, it was over ten years ago that we implemented that, and so they went through a set of modules for training that was free as well. But it was more time-intensive in that they took a pre-test and a post-test, as they do in the EAMS modules. But it had to be corrected by someone, and at that time, I was the coordinator, and I was correcting those as, as they took those. So, a little time-intensive in that way, and not, didn't have the component of the staff working with them and doing that, that piece and the coaching piece. So, we know that staff development that is embedded in what you're doing and not a sit-and-get is more effective over time in changing behavior of, not only of the adults, but also of our kids.
So we do have a couple videos to show you of paraprofessionals that are, have gone through the modules and have had the opportunity to work with their cooperating teacher.
So, tell us a little bit about your involvement in the Paramodul Project.
Sure. I thought it was great. I thought it was really, really valuable, and a couple things come to mind. I thought the case examples are awesome because I could listen to those or read those and then think about a student that I might be working with with similar behaviors and challenges, and formulate better ideas of how to respond to that student and how to help that student with those behaviors. That was really useful. And then I think, you know, anything that helps one understand why a child is behaving or what behavior is, can only be good. So if, if teachers could go through this training, it'd be awesome. We'd be able to communicate with each other better, and teachers and paraprofessionals could be kind of on the same page with how to, how to respond to a student and work with a student.
Great, thank you. So Sue, tell me a little bit about what you think about being involved in the Paramodul Project here at Sidley.
Well, I've been a para here for nineteen years. And when I was doing this project with you, I had learned, basically, as I was using these procedures that it's been validating for myself over the years, that this is exactly what is working for the children, and also, the modules are easy to find, they were easy to understand. I also recommend that people who are starting in this profession, that they take these courses first because they are extremely helpful, and they also...
They were under pressure.
Okay, I really like these modules just because they are a great tool to use in different situations in our classroom. And just to show how important they were outside of this per district, I'm taking grad classes through St. Thomas, and we are assigned each week a different module, supposed to go through it and report back to our classmates about what we learned.
Yolanda, tell me about the module.
Okidoki. The module, I couldn't even pronounce that word to begin with, but when I got started, I thought I knew everything. Ah, it's so much fun and interesting. I, some of them I learned from workshop, and, but they really built it like, like new ideas, old ideas, they turn into new ideas and fun for the game. I mean...
I think, you know, we had some other videos that we did show at our conference, but I think the overall theme was how important it was for our teachers and our educational assistants to go through these together, so that they are using the same language and they are implementing the same interventions with students.
So, thank you, and are there any questions that you might have?
Excellent, thank you. Questions, board members? Fritz?
So, all of the modules that we're talking about are all specific to autism spectrum disorders, or are there...
On the EAMS website, they are, but if you replace autism with any other disability category, it could be applicable.
Good question. Other questions? Ellen?
So first, I think that the model is fantastic, and I hope that at the conference, that the people that you were presenting to could, I mean, to have results and have it be embedded and have coaching. So now I have a tough question. When you talked about staffing impact, it reduced it by one FTE, which from a financial stewardship thing is fantastic. Does that cause any of the EAs to sort of, the pares to pause and say, oh, here, you know, we're, we're training ourselves out of a job? Did that come up at all?
It does, and actually, even outside of the module training, it does come, come up, because we always talk about, whenever we're talking with our educational assistants, that we want them to work themselves out of a job. However, there'll always be, always be other students that are needing their help, and there'll always be students that need some level of help, so, but our ultimate goal overall is, is creating and helping students to develop more independence, and, and that's the goal, and that's the goal of their job, and so it's the purpose of why we're here.
Other questions board members have? Margaret?
So, I understand marking down the prompts, that every time you give a prompt, you're counting that. How do you then extrapolate that into how much time was spent giving a prompt?
We don't really need that, it's more of the, the frequency of prompting that's more important in this case, at least at this time, and then, why are they prompting? Why? And if you know more about the student, the student's disability, the reasons why they're behaving the way they're behaving, looking and reflecting on your own behaviors as well, and, and looking at what are some other strategies we might have in our tool belt to be able to provide that structure that a student can be more independent, I think is, is more important.
I just, when I was looking at the graph and saying, well, how much time our pares are spending giving prompts, I was wondering how you came with the time measurement.
I think what they did was for every prompt, they equated it to about a minute, because you know, you give them a prompt, they react, there's some, you know, back and forth. So it's never just the fifteen seconds of a intervention, but they counted it as a minute because you are either physically standing there by them after your prompt, or you're continuing a conversation. So I think we just counted it as about a minute.
And then they're all equal, correct? Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
If there are, I think this is really a very positive story, which is why I asked Cheryl and Linda come tonight. You know, if you think about it, it shows that we have the capacity to develop ourselves within the system, not necessarily having to go out and bring other folks in. This is totally a homegrown piece, using what's in the budget, which are free resources, you know, and leveraging that. I think it is one of the, an excellent example of how PLC work should run. So the special education teachers noticed an impediment to student engagement, which is the number of times that an adult has to prompt the student. If you think about, every time that the student, the adult has to prompt the student, that means the student is disengaged from the learning activity. So, they had the, the idea, they had the goal, they had the data, they implemented an action, they measured their results, and then, I think even the most powerful piece is that they have replicated and adapted the program to another building. It is all of the things that I have heard board members say over the years of what we really want out of PLCs, it's nearly idyllic in terms of what you think about our hope of collaboration, replication, and all those. And at the end of the day, other people have noticed the strategy and have asked us to come and present it. And so I think when you put all those things together, it's just a shining example of how we have the people, and when they, when they're given the time, they can come up with things that really make it dramatic. That's, if you're to go back, that is pretty dramatic. I mean, it, it looks bad on the graph, but if you ever are in a, in a room and you have to, if you ever watched a child who has to be prompted that many times, it is really impacting their learning. And so I just, I can, I was really thrilled when we had seen this program, and I just felt it was important for you to hear it.
Absolutely, this is excellent. Margaret, one more quick question. Are we able to see these modules? Can the public see this? It's not, you have to have a key word or something.
The websites are there, it's open to anyone, feel free to...
Okay, thank you.
Right, the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, it does ask you to create and go in and create your password, but we, the district is a member, and so you can create a password.
Okay, thank you.
I will add just another piece of exciting news, I guess, related to it, is that when working with other coordinators and assistant directors through our region, that there are a couple other districts who are going to be starting this, this next year. So it's exciting that we were able to bring that, and that people found value in it, so...
Excellent, thank you. I, I just had one last question. So the legislators have been working on, or they've identified, you know, some of the challenges with special education teachers, and so there was some conversation, it didn't, I think it got a little bit of funding this year, but I think your school district had to be forty percent minority for paraprofessionals to have a fast track or just to be able to move on to a full special ed licensure as a teacher. Do you think they're, they're on the right path there? Is that something that could potentially help us as a district?
That's a good question. So are you asking if the, the training modules will help to prompt that?
Well, no, what I was asking about, and I wasn't clear, but what I was asking about is paraprofessionals having the opportunity to become full-licensed special ed teachers, and the legislators identifying some opportunities and ways to make that path a little bit easier for them if they have, you know, already have a BA degree or whatever, that they can move on to become teachers, which we know there's the shortage. So they're, I think, looking at it from, from that aspect. I know there was some, some money given, but it was, you had to be forty percent minority district and whatever, but do you... district and whatever, but do you feel like if they were to implement that, to where more districts would have the opportunity, would you see that among the paraprofessionals, that there would be some interest in, in being able to, to move and develop their own career path?
I think there's definitely an interest. We see more and more our paraprofessionals or educational assistants looking to go back. You saw Brittany talked about that she was in a program. She's actually becoming one of our autism teachers for the cooperative, this, this fall. So that's a great example of that, and we have others that are going back as well, or we've hired several of others this year that have gone back, that have worked as paraprofessionals in other districts, have gone back to get their licenses and have come. So I think it is important, I know that the University of Winona is working with that and working with the program, and our Region 10, the Southeast Region, is working at developing that program with them, and we work together to identify individuals that could get into or apply to the programs and become a part of cohort that would go through their, their licensing program.
And I do think that the modules, you know, if you think about it, when a person comes and becomes an educational assistant, as they get into the work and as they fall in love with the work, which many of our educational assistants do, and as they get into the modules, they're going to start to feel that they have the efficacy to do some of this, and that can be the launching pad for becoming a teacher. And what we know is that specifically, in some very specialized areas of special education, we are seeing on the, now and on the horizon, significant shortages in those areas, and we feel very fortunate to have staffed the cooperative as well as we have, and part of that was being very intentional, getting out early, having a strong advertising campaign, not just going through the typical channels, but that well will dry up as well. This is hard work, and I think that when educational assistants who know what the work is, they've had some training through these kinds of modules, they move on to a professional preparation program, not only do I think that we're going to get them to move into special education, I think those folks, we will have a much better chance of retaining them long-term, because they go into the position eyes wide open. And I think that that's what these kinds of things can do, it can open people's eyes and say, yeah, I can do that. And hopefully, we yield the results of having been the people who have helped them out along the way, that they will consider us the place that they want to teach.
And I would also add to that, that as new teachers coming into the field of special education, you learn, you know, learn a lot in your coursework, but if you also then, as an induction piece, have this training modules as part of, of your first years of training and coaching from people in the field, and working with your paraprofessionals and feeling more effective with students quicker, I think it's going to be a game changer.
Excellent, thank you. Any final comments or questions? Just thank you guys for this, for your work, incredible work, and for your, your fun presentation. And Lynn, I don't know if you've ever been at a school board meeting as a presenter yourself.
Not as a presenter, I, when I was doing my internship with Gary, I came, but that's it.
Excellent, yeah, so it's nice to have you present.
Thank you very much.
It's good to have you here, thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to the next item for discussion, which is charter school authorization update. Dr. Hillman?
So I just have a very brief update for you on our charter school authorization activities. Just to remind you, we're one of three school districts left in the state that is still pursuing being a charter school authorizer. So we are mixed in with a number of other, what they call, single-purpose authorizers, like the Audubon Society of the Northwoods, for example, is a very large authorizer. So, you heard Dr. Richardson give a very detailed update in the spring, and I just wanted to bring to your attention just a few things that we're working on. One, we are working through our corrective action plan, which we had a year from when that letter was delivered to us, in I believe, late February. Our goal is to have the corrective action plan completed by October 1st. And the key thing is, a lot of the pieces in the corrective action plan were, were things that because we are a traditional school district, we didn't necessarily have specific things as an authorizer. For example, this evening in our work session prior to this meeting, we started working on the vision and mission piece again, to update ours. You would think as a public school district, that that would govern our authorizer activities as well, but the department really wants us to have separate mission and vision for our authorizing activities. They want us to have some specific policies around our authorizing activities, so there's going to be some cases in the next few months where I will be bringing you some policies specifically to the actions that we take as a charter school authorizer. And in some cases, they're going to feel a little bit like they're duplicate to some of the things we have. Then the final piece I wanted to update you on is that a number of these things are really about us communicating these things to the world, because we do not have a section of our website yet that says "authorizer activities," where if I am a single-purpose authorizer, I have a full website, because I am out seeking many other charters to enroll or to, to enlist in my charter school portfolio. Our mission and our vision of this is very narrow. We are willing to authorize charter schools who meet certain requirements within the boundaries of the Northfield Public Schools. So we are just very much different, but we are building a website so that we're able to communicate all of those things to the department. Most of them are not huge things for us to do, they're really just taking the pieces that we've had and formalizing them. So, I just wanted to make sure that you got an update on that, and then, each summer, most likely at the July meeting, we'll provide a charter school authorization update. It just wasn't appropriate at the July meeting this year, because we're still working through some of the corrective action planning, but I felt it was important just to give you an update as to where we are at now, and we're working hard on it, and we anticipate that we will have it completed in October. And the department actually has been very helpful when we've had questions about, you know, would this suffice for what we're looking for with this portion of the corrective action plan? They've actually given us feedback in a timely manner, and we're very pleased with that, and not always the answer we want to hear, but at least we're getting the feedback. I'd rather know those things now than after we submit the plan in October. So, just wanted to bring people up to date. Do, do folks have any questions on our charter school authorization activities or process?
Any questions, comments? I have a question about the website piece. Is that, so, the website is just for MDE to access, or how would that be used?
So it will be a public website, so that anyone who is interested in our charter school, our status as a charter school authorization, authorizer could go to. So, we will point, I'm looking at MDE as being our primary user of that site, however, if there was another group of people who wanted to start a charter school within our school district boundary area, they would be able to get all of the information that you need to make application, they would have all of the expectations, the rubrics, all of the kinds of ways that we would judge folks in terms of their success. And so it's really going to be kind of a one-stop shop. We used to have a bound, a binder, you know, of all those pieces. We're really just digitizing it so that if we have people who are interested, we can point them right to the necessary forums on the web, and when the department is doing their reviews, we have a public place that we can show them today, because a lot of the pieces where they're saying, yes, you have some of these things, but you're not effectively communicating them to the broader community.
So is that a link from our website, or...
So, yeah, we're building it, we have it's behind the scenes right now, we're building a section, so it'll be just, it will be under the "About the District" area. Be about, under "About the District," and it will say "Charter School Authorization," and so it'll be just similar, if you go to "About," and it says "School Board," or those kinds of pieces, and then, it will have a number of sub-pages that we're able to share information about.
Okay, excellent. Good.
Any other questions? Yes, Jeff?
Is there any movement towards simplifying that process? It seems extremely bureaucratic and insane.
Well, you know, the, the legislature did take some action in this past session, in which they did exempt school districts from certain parts of the reauthorization piece. Now that will help us five years from now or so. It will not help us now, because we had started the process beforehand. Now, as you know, we were part of a group that really tried to shepherd that legislation, and we've, and, so we have worked hard to get there. We will realize that benefit down the line, just not right now. And I think what's important to remember is that we are, the MDE is creating their reauthorization process based upon the legislation. And, you know, for as many great charter schools as we have, and we're very fortunate in Northfield, they have two excellent charter schools, but charter schools, like any school, there are a variety of levels of success. And so when, when you're a single-purpose authorizer, and you don't have the district office power that we do in human resources and finance and buildings and grounds and leadership and curriculum and those things, that we can leverage to help our portfolio of schools, the department is really writing all of these regulations for the single-purpose authorizer. And as a school district, it's an unusual spot where we're really the square peg in the round hole, so to speak, because we're being asked to jump through things that they have to do, because the legislature has said, you will do this, but they don't necessarily apply to us. So, they have made some headway, there would be more to go. But we'll say thank you for now.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, thanks for that update, Matt. Okay, so we will move on to items for individual action, we only have one this evening, and that's the resolution relating to the, relating to the election of school board members and calling the school board election. So it's really just a piece we have to do as we follow the election process and the rules in governing that. So, is there a motion to approve the resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school board election? Moved by Margaret, is there a second? Second by Noel. Is there any questions or comments regarding this resolution? We start forward as part of the process. So this is a resolution, so a roll call vote will be needed. Erin?
Aye.
Lynnell?
Aye.
Glanville?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Bogdan?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, okay. We will move on then to items for the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Noel?
I don't want to pull you out, but I have a question regarding the, the swim club agreement.
Okay, so, because, because this is an item, because this is consent grouping, and we would need to have discussion on an item, we will pull that item and discuss it separately. So, we, is there a motion then to approve the consent grouping with the exception of the Northfield Swim Club agreement? Moved by Ellen, second. Second by Rob. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's move on then to the swim club agreement. That was an, an item that we will take as an item for individual action, which is the Northfield Swim Club, agreement with Northfield Public Schools. Is there a motion to approve the agreement between Northfield Public Schools and the Northfield Swim Club? Moved by Ellen, is there a second? Second by Fritz. Any discussion or questions?
Yes. Item 13, insurance. It speaks of insurance against bodily injuries and property damage. I'm wondering if there is any insurance for liability carried on behalf of the swim club, or carried by the swim club.
And I'm going to defer to Erin, because it's her department that negotiates this particular lease.
And I can get you on more. I, they do carry their own insurance, so this is what we have in all of our agreements with our long-term leases, we have this same paragraph, and then we, it's what we require them to have on file with us. I'm guessing that the, the swim club as its own entity does have their own insurance policy as well.
The issue, of course, came to my mind because of the tragedies that have occurred in the last two or three years, maybe five years. And it seems to me that while they may have liability, usually, when they, when they want to establish the cause of the liability, they usually go to the school district. And so I would like that we have, we're clear that we have no obligation to any kind of liability issues.
Yeah, and I can maybe run that by our insurance agent too, and just get further clarity for that. Would that be helpful?
Sure.
Jeff, you have a question?
I'm just wondering too, I mean, a lot of times it's standard for, I mean, a million dollars is always a kind of a base number, but I'm wondering in today's world too, is what, you know, is that enough?
I think we have had these, our template agreements reviewed in the last few years, and determined that they were sufficient for the purposes of these leases. So I, I think what Erin is saying is that, you know, this is really a template of the piece that we have used with a number of, really what this is a long-term rental is really what we would look at it as.
Yep, and this, for the swim club only covers their practices, so this covers their Monday through Friday practices, that all happen within the hours that the buildings are open. This agreement does not cover meets, tournaments, anything that happened outside Monday through Friday.
Because then they're leasing it as, on an individual basis.
Yes, yep.
They're renting it.
This is really, this is really just the lease agreement for their practices, not for anything outside of practices. So when they're, for example, bringing in other communities or other swimmers outside their own club, they have a separate, it's a separate rental.
And I think the, the big piece there is that bodily injury and the property damage coverage. I would think that most of your liability is going to be in bodily injury pieces overall, so I think the fact is that there's a million dollars of, that they're, they're required to show a million dollars of coverage, I think is substantial. However, it is a piece that we can certainly and very easily get clarification on. Is this the same language that we've had in the agreement before?
Yes, this language did not change.
I don't have an issue if it's, as long as bodily injury and liability have that relationship.
Well, and like we said, we can certainly check on this, and, so Erin, what would the, would, do we have the swim club using the facility before the next time that we meet?
They're not in, nope, they are not in there, I believe, they're done with their, I mean, the, no, the pool is being cleaned, they're done with their summer practices, and the next group that will be in there are high school swimmers, so...
So if you would like to...
They will not be back in there. This starts on September 1st, this contract.
So we have a motion and a second, which means we have a pending motion on the floor, so we'd need another motion to move this to a later voting table, if we will have to take some action, whether we decide we're comfortable with voting on it prior to learning some of the aspects of the insurance, or if we would rather wait and bring it back to our August 22nd board meeting with more information. Either way, then we would, if we were to do that, we would need to table the vote. So it's up to board members if they feel comfortable doing that, or if we need to...
I think I'd like consensus of the board on that one.
This is a similar agreement to what we've used with this, you know, group before, and it's a similar piece that we've had, you know, our attorney's review over the past several years, because this is the templated lease that we have. And, as you know, we usually have pretty good legal counsel, so I think that if you're comfortable approving it as-is, we could certainly bring back a report, you know, of what we have, and if there was a need to do a revised lease, we could certainly do that. But of course, we defer to the will of the board, if you would prefer to table this until we can, you know, certainly, without doubt, tell you what that means, we certainly can do that as well. But we, this is something that we have had in, in all of our leases that we do with those longer-term tenants, including, I'm going to guess, the churches and...
Yep, so this was the same language that was in the Kansas church long-term agreement that was approved.
I don't disagree with that, but swimming pool is pretty, pretty unforgiving.
A lot more liability to the swimming pool, that's why I wonder on that liability amount, if it's too kind of low.
I'm, I'm willing to proceed and to get the information, and then revisit it again if necessary.
Okay.
Move on.
Okay, so, prior to vote, is there anyone who has any last-minute questions or any other... We would vote on the master agreement contract. And then, Erin and...
You can direct administration to bring back additional information. Administration to bring back additional information.
Point of information, you know, I would say too, with any other school districts, I mean, specifically more to the pool, and like you're saying, there's a lot more injury potential out of a pool and, you know, liability, so I'm wondering, you know, there's always primary and secondary, you know, with an insurance thing like that, and I'm just wondering if that million dollars, based on how long that's been reviewed, is enough for, you know, a pool. Obviously, walking into heaven church is a lot easier and not getting hurt than it is to swim in a pool.
You're suggesting there may be two levels in our insurance...
Could be, I mean, it's just a matter, and I, I mean, I would just bounce that off another school district, because your liabilities, you know, are...
We can certainly, I mean, bring it back to the attorney and, and our insurance agent, and figure out what other districts are doing.
So if the board is comfortable moving forward with the vote, then with the understanding that therefore there was any additional information or addendums to the agreement or adjustments to the agreement going forward, they'd be presented at the August 22nd board meeting? Okay, so...
Yes, Ellen, sorry.
So, does that mean that nothing would get signed on this agreement? We're, we're approving it, but we revisit it? I guess I just want to be clear about what...
I think what I was hearing is that we would approve it as-is and, and sign off on it, and then we would bring back the additional information, clarification, and if there were, if there were changes that needed to be made based upon those questions, we could bring a... bring a modified or an addendum for the lease to the next board meeting.
Do we have a right to do that? Do we have a right?
I believe that we have an opportunity to share that with them.
Yes, we do. So this board, you know, has the opportunity to sign it first, and then we go, they, we, this contract has already been reviewed with the swim club, so they're in agreement, and then we always bring it to this, to this board first, and so we can hold off on bringing it back. You know, you can sign it, we can follow up with them and let them know that we are revisiting the one piece before we have them sign it too.
Okay. So if everyone's comfortable with that, we'll, we'll move forward with the vote. So we have a motion and a second. No more further discussion or comments, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I appreciate the board's patience as we talk about this.
No, it's excellent questions, and I think, I think it was really good discussion.
Well, we'll get you the answer very quickly, it's not, it's a piece that we'll have for you probably by tomorrow morning.
We're fully comfortable with that, absolutely. Okay, good. So, with that, we had items for information, which Matt had already reviewed, was filing for school board. Then future meetings, Monday, August 22nd at 7:00 PM. We do have two board members who are unable, unable to make that particular board meeting, so if anyone's, other board members' personal schedules change to where they find they aren't going to be there, let me know, just so we're assured of quorum. Then following that, Monday, September 12th, we'll have our second strategic planning work session from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. That location is yet to be determined, but that will be followed by a regular school, school board meeting at 7:00 PM in the High School Media Center. So, with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn.
We adjourn.
Moved by Noel, second. Second by Fritz. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.